Bring back Skype.
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't that not even a thing anymore? Did they just go bankrupt or close their?
Wow.
I remember those days.
Yep.
All right, it's six o'clock, so I'll call the meeting of the Stearns County Planning Commission to order. Roll call vote, Jason Wienerman here. David Benchard and Jason Crowner both absent. This seems really loud. Okay. I don't wanna yell at people. Dave Nafla.
Here.
Jacob Holk.
Here.
Rich Blankish.
Here.
Tara Ostendorf.
Here.
And Joe Persky.
Here.
Let's start by a pledge of allegiance.
Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so a couple of housekeeping rules. What we're gonna do is we'll call each item on the agenda in order, in the five-item order. We'll have the applicant sitting in the seat that says applicant. Make sure the green light on your button is on. We'll have the staff do the staff report, then we'll have the applicant respond. We'll open the meeting to public comments. If you're gonna provide a comment, please come to the public testimony. Again, make sure the green light is on. Before you begin, state your name and address, please, and try to keep yourself concise and to the pointed hand. And let's begin. So, agenda item number one, to consider a rezoning request submitted by Sam DeLeo, St. Cloud, Minnesota, on behalf of Marion T. Klopner Revocable Trust, Clearwater, Minnesota. According to Section 4.10 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439, to rezone approximately 74.73 acres from the Ag-40 zoning district to the residential 10, R-10 zoning district. The property is part of the south half of the southeast quarter and part of the southeast corner, southwest corner of Section 28, and part of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter in Section 33, lying between County Road 75 and Franklin Road, Linden Township. The address is 21044 County Road 75, Clearwater, Minnesota. So, members who visited the site, Jason Wienerman, I did. Dave?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Tara?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Okay. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Planning Commission members. So, this item is before you to request a rezoning on the 74 acres. It's two parcel ID numbers. Currently zoned agricultural 40, wishing to go to a residential 10. The property is sandwiched between two roads, Franklin Road and County Road 75. The, so access could be from either road. The current building site there accesses from County Road 75. The Beaver Island Trail also runs on the south side of the property, right along 75 as well. As you can see, the, if you drove by there, you saw the vegetation is varying from tillable farmland to very wooded land. The Plum Creek is a tributary, classified tributary, which runs through the property. So, the land within 300 feet of that is within shoreland. That's what those two blue lines show on either side of the creek, Plum Creek, is the shoreline overlay district. The surrounding land uses, if we zoom out to the next photo, you can see there's about 33, approximately 33 homes and one animal feedlot, small feedlot, less than 10 animal units, within a half a mile. So, it's fairly residential area along with some tillable farmland, but not a lot of animal egg in this area. The zoning in this area directly adjacent is all agricultural 40. The blue you see to the north is not a district that we have much of in the county, but it's the scenic river district along the Mississippi. When we look at the future land use map, so the property there is outlined in red, and the east half of the property is in the concentrated residential district for the future land use plan. The west half is in the ag and rural district on the future land use plan. So, it's right on the edge of what has been thought of or planned to be concentrated residential. So, currently, the property, like I said, it's 840. There is one home site, that's all that's allowed on the 74 acres. And if the rezoning would be approved, seven building entitlements would be allowed in an R-10. If they would choose to do a cluster development and plat small lots, then they could have up to 11 building entitlements. We did run the LEASAS score on the property, that's the land evaluation, site assessment, to calculate the value of the property in terms of, for agricultural use. It scored 68.75. That is above our threshold of 65, primarily because the land score part of it was 45 out of 50, saying the soils are decent there for farming. The township, Linden Township reviewed it, they recommended approval of the request. That's all I have for staff report.
Applicant introductions.
Good evening, my name is Sam DeLeo. My address is 13 11th Avenue North, St. Cloud, Minnesota.
Anything to add to the staff report?
No, they always do a great job. So, I mean, it's, I guess, from our point of view, myself as a representative of the owners here, and the family that owns the property, we feel that rezoning this does align with the township growth patterns, and that the property is fairly suitable for R-10-type living. I don't think going any smaller than that would be wise, just because of Plum Creek and trying to minimize the impact to the neighboring shoreline area. So, that's why we chose 10 acres instead of going with an R-5, even though the surrounding lots are much smaller than 10 acres. Yeah, that's about all I have unless you guys have questions. Do I have to start over?
Commission questions for the staff. I have one question. You said, so they'll have 10 building entitlements at the 10, and then 11 if they do a cluster. So, we'll determine that once the plat comes through?
Correct. Seven is the base density, and then 11 if they cluster. So, if the rezoning's approved, then the surveyor and the family will start conceptually planning how they wanna plat it. We'll do a meeting with them, a pre-plat meeting, and go through with that, yeah. So, you would see this again if they do a major plat, it would be back before you.
So then, time for the applicant. Do you have a vision for how you wanna see this divided?
No, they don't have any, I guess, concepts or plans to plat right now, just get into rezoning done first.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, question for the applicant. Access to the property, if you have the 10-acre sites or 10-building sites, all would be access from Franklin Road?
I would assume so.
I sit on the Stearns County Park Board, and the trail is the only trail that the county actually owns the property.
Right.
And so, it's essentially parkland. So, access across the parkland would be an issue.
Yeah, I don't think that's gonna be a problem. I know that when the county purchased the right-of-way, there were a couple of crossings identified that are existing right now, and I don't think they would be asking for any new crossings across the trail.
Yeah. From my understanding, talking to the Director of Parks, we would follow what real authority uses. If you wanna put a new crossing in, then you eliminate one of the other crossings. That's how they operate.
That's fine, and we can cross that bridge when we get to it. I don't think it's gonna be an issue. I think naturally mostly access would come off of Franklin anyways.
I'll bring it up at our main meeting, just so everybody that's on the park board is aware of.
Sure, good point.
Potentially.
Thank you.
Okay.
Joe?
Mr. Chair, my concerns were similar to Commissioner Blankish. I was concerned about how much traffic was gonna dump out on 75, because the busyness of that road, you know, we wanna eliminate the number of accesses on the 75, especially if there would be 10 building sites. But if it's gonna come off of Franklin, then I've got no problem with those access.
So, tying into that, so if you take Franklin towards St. Cloud, it turns into a dirt road. Is there any improvement the township's thinking on that down the road? Because as you say, you know, shoving 10 more folks, 20 cars, whatever, down a dirt road. Has the township said anything about that?
Mr. Chair, they haven't expressed anything to me about it.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair, I just have one clarifying question. You have the two tracks here, are those for just trying to figure out different uses?
Define the two tracks, is it up on the screen, those?
Yeah, so you have the one to the east and one to the west.
Yeah, it's two parcel ID numbers, and on the survey, it was tract E1 and F. E1 and E2 go together, and then tract F.
The reason we set it up that way when we subdivided this property, which, that's a whole nother story, was just to simplify, make it more sellable, so, you know, somebody could come in and at least buy a portion of the property. It probably would not be feasible to buy the whole thing at once, but if it is, they can. But this way, somebody can buy one portion, and somebody can buy the other, trying to limit the tillable land to the east on one parcel, and the more wooded on the west.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from the board? Hearing done, I open the public hearing. If you have comments, please approach the podium. Any comments from the public? Final offer, any comments from the public? Lacking a mad dash, I entertain a motion to close.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion from Rich, second.
Oh, second.
Second from Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Public hearing is closed. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Any further questions or comments from the commission? Hearing done, let's move to the findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance? Why or why not? I believe it is consistent with the ordinance, Sections 4.10 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439. Number two, does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list applicable sections, yea or nay.
Mr. Chair, it conforms to the living goals, Sections 2 and 3, manage impacts of growth and development on the county's rural character, natural resources, and support housing options.
Thank you, Tara. Bullet point number three, is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood? Why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I believe it is. There are a number of the same size lots, or a similar character of lots, to the north of the proposed property plat.
Thank you. How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I believe the applicant in their application has laid out what they, their intent with rezoning of the R-10 to help create a transitional neighborhood.
Great, thanks Tara. Other issues pertinent to this matter? Township, we did get concurrence from the township that liked their approval of this. Rich, do you wanna state the park concerns again for the record?
Yeah. It's in regards to crossing the Beaver Island Trail for access to the west side of the property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Blankish, I actually wrote something up here if you wanna hear it.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Limit access across County Road 75 and maximize the access from Franklin Road. Parks Department should weigh in on the driveways crossing the Beaver Island Trail prior to being granted.
On that part of your statement, is it the, if there are any new proposed crossings, or? There are two crossings there now, when I looked at that place.
You wanna say limited to existing crossings?
Mr. Chair, can I just comment quick? We can't actually put any conditions on it, but we can definitely add this into the findings.
Yeah, this is a comment, yeah.
Okay.
You wanna hear it again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Limit access to County Road 75 and maximize access to Franklin Road. Parks Department should weigh in on driveways crossing the Beaver Island Trail.
Thank you.
And then we also have the river protection thing overlay?
Plum Creek.
The Plum Creek? I'm butchering that, sorry. Whatever that is, so close to the proximity. Any other issues or concerns pertinent to this matter?
Sam, I think it fits the neighborhood, so I think it'll work, we should be able to work that out.
Hearing done, I entertain a motion, one way or the other.
I will make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the acreage.
Rich moves approval, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Tara, seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion passes, this will come before the county board on May 6th. Thank you. Next agenda item is Jeffrey Kostreba? Do we have Jeffrey here? Let's go to number three, and if Jeffrey comes, we can pick him up later. All right, we're on agenda item number three now, which is Jonathan and Ashley Klaafaki? Klaafaki? Sorry about that. To consider a request for conditional use permit submitted by Jonathan and Ashley Klaafak- Jonathan, Ashley, Glenn, and Deborah Klaafaki of Melrose, Minnesota, to section, according to Sections 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.9, and 9.3 of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439. The request is to expand an existing animal feedlot facility with more than 300 animal units within 1,000 feet of the city limits, and a feedlot greater than 700 animal units proposing changes. The feedlot is located in the Ag-40 zoning district. The property is in part of the west half of the southwest corner of Section 3 of Grove Township. The property address is 34402 370th Street, Melrose, Minnesota. Members who visited? I did. Dave?
Yes.
Jacob? Rich?
Yes.
Tara?
I did not.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, staff report, Bethany, please. Bethany?
Mr. Chair, members of the board. As you had stated, this is a request for a conditional use permit for a feedlot. Why it needs the conditional use permit is because it is located within 1,000 feet of the city limits, which is the city of Melrose, and it's a feedlot greater than 700 animal units that is proposing some changes. They're looking to construct a replacement total confinement barn, which is shown as number one on the map included in your packet, to expand an existing total confinement barn, which is number six, to a little bit smaller width, or length, I should say, from 496 feet to 624. So, that'll be that number six outlined in blue as modifying. So, they're looking at making that one a little bit longer. And then, to permit an existing 15-by-60 mortality management slash compo shed, which is that number eight on the north end of the property. And they'd like to establish the maximum animal units for the facility as 920 as part of this conditional use permit request. So, as you stated, the feedlot is located at 34402 370th Street, Melrose, Minnesota. That is Section 3 of Grove Township. Listed in your packet are some of the Stearns County comp plan items that apply to this site. Why we are here tonight is this feedlot was originally registered with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, known as the MPCA, on January 18th of 2000 for 1,434.6 animal units. It has remained registered, and meets all the state and county registration requirements, and was permitted by an NPDES, which is a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, permit through the MPCA. The applicants on September 16th, 2024, requested of the MPCA to terminate the permits from that NPDES, because they were reducing the maximum animal units on-site to less than 1,000. On October 7th, 2024, the MPCA verified that that coverage by them was no longer required for the facility, and the registration was updated for the site for 782 animal units, which that consisted of 34,000 turkeys over 5 pounds and 34,000 turkeys under 5 pounds. With that termination of that NPDES coverage from the MPCA, the feedlot permitting then falls under the jurisdiction of Stearns County via the delegation agreement that we have with the MPCA. The joint county and state feedlot permit application was received by our department on December 18th of 2024. The application was amended and updated on March 18th of 2025. Also on that day, a manure transfer plan was submitted by the applicant. This plan is required, which reflects information for the site's manure generation, handling, and nutrient content of the manure that is generated on the site. Staff conducted a compliance inspection on February 26th, 2025. That was determined the facility was compliant for water quality discharge requirements, and the owners were compliant with manure testing and record-keeping requirements as well. The current facility has existing total confinement barns, a dead animal manure compo shed, and a concrete solid manure storage structure. And that manure storage structure is outlined in that map as number seven. The applicants are proposing to replace the total confinement barn on-site. That will be wider than the previous one, but shorter in length. So, that you'll see on that map there is number one and number two. And then adding on to what I had mentioned before is that number six outlined in blue. They're looking to establish the 920 animal units for the site, which then will be 40,000 head of turkeys over 5 pounds and 40,000 head of turkeys under 5 pounds. We don't have no valid complaints on file for this feedlot. The surrounding adjoining properties in Stearns County are zoned A80 to the west, A40 to the south, and then the municipality, which is the city of Melrose, is to the east and to the north. There are 259 residents and 11 existing registered feedlots within one mile of this feedlot, which that's also shown on a map included in your guys' packet. The nearest residence to the property is located 1,353 feet, which is southwest of- The nearest residence to the property is located 1,353 feet, which is southwest of the feedlot. And that's shown on the map there on the screen, also included in your packet, and then it also shows two of the other existing homes closest to the feedlot as well. Access is via 370th Street and then an environmental assessment worksheet known as EAW, an environmental impact statement known as an EIS, a state disposal system, SDS, or Feedlot National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, which is known as the NPDS. Feedlot permit are not required for this facility at this time. The findings of facts are included in your packet as well. And then we just have the two staff recommendations for the following conditions for the request. And then the feedlot review minutes are also included in your packet. As of the, tonight of this meeting, I do not have any public correspondence to read into the record. I will just note that initially upon letters being sent out and the public receiving them, I did get one phone call that just had some general questions and did not submit anything, so I don't have anything, so that's all I have at this time.
Thank you, Bethany. Applicants, name and address, please.
John Klaubucki, address is 34402 370th Street, Melrose.
Ashley Klaafaki, same address.
Anything to add?
I guess I'm just placing a barn, making it bigger, I'm cutting. Originally before the, I had a storm in August and... Okay, there we go. Can you hear me? Before the storm in August, my farm was a 1342 animal unit farm. I had five barns, as you can see. So that barn four in the front is obviously gone now. Did a barn two next to it had a lot of damage, so I decided to take both of them down kind of later on in, in October, and I was going to build a new barn by number two there. And then working on the permitting and everything, getting everything forward, I mean, excuse my, I'm sure you guys all came out, although a lot of you guys didn't, you did see that I, that it, you know, there was a structure there coming already. We had a little hiccup with environmental service with some things that I didn't know I needed to get through, but I'm hoping that we got what we need now to get everything. Before that happened, barn three over there, I had a small fire in that barn the end of February, so that barn will be eliminated too coming here for my feedlot. Do you have any other questions for me?
Commission members, any questions for the applicants or staff? Oh my gosh, none?
Mr. Chair, I do want to make a comment, so, you know, it is concerning when we have, you know, construction going on prior to getting the approval. However, the circumstances and the conditions following the storm, I think, maybe...
I know.
Way into that situation. But, you know, we really frowned on having, you know, things happen and then having to come after the fact.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yep.
Further questions? Hearing none, open the public hearing. Anybody here, again, approach the podium? Any public comments? Any public comments? Third offer, any public comments? Hearing none, entertain the motion to close.
I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Rich moves to close the hearing, second.
I'll second.
Dave and Tara seconded, both got a half second on that one, so we'll call it a team effort. Correspondence, as you mentioned, no correspondence, but there was a phone call about inquiries. Any further discussion from the commission? Hearing none, let's move on to the findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the Sterns County zoning ordinance number 439? Please specify all performance standards that apply.
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with land use zoning ordinance 439, sections 4.4, 4.6, 4.8, 4.14, 6.8.3E, and 9.3.
Thanks, Rich. So just a question for staff, on my form here, I have a bunch of checkboxes. I'm assuming those have all been checked? Okay, just want to make sure. Is there an environmental assessment worksheet, also known as an EAW, an environmental impact statement, EIS, a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, NPDES, a state disposal system, or other permit required for this facility?
Mr. Chair, there is not.
Thank you, Tara. Does the proposal conform to the goals and objectives of the county comprehensive land use plan? Please specify the appropriate sections, yea or nay.
Mr. Chair, I believe it is consistent with agricultural pillar goals, objective one, three, four, and five. Do you want me to read them out?
Are we good with that? Okay, thanks Tara. Will the site configuration, number and type of animals at this site and prevailing wind conditions impact any of the following areas? Traffic, public safety, schools, parks, churches, or other municipal residential areas, and other impacts?
Mr. Chair, I don't believe that it will.
I would, I'm going to add, it's fairly close to the city of Melrose, but they didn't say anything, so that there don't seem to be concern about this.
I mean, I don't live very far, I'm just like over the things, so I personally don't have a complaint, but let's just say I'm everybody for Melrose. I'll represent, I'll overstep.
There we go. Has information been provided regarding the impact of property values in the area as a result of the proposal?
None.
Have all recommendations from the Feedlot Review Committee and Feedlot staff been reviewed? They were included in the packet, so. Other issues pertinent to this matter, please specify. Hearing none, entertain a motion in favor or opposition?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thanks, Rich, second.
I'll second.
Thanks, Jacob. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. This will be heard by the full board on, the county board on May 6th.
And John and Deborah, you know, we appreciate responsible producers, you know, that add to our ag economy and, you know, follow the land use rules and use good ag practices, so thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Alright, let's see if I can keep up my pattern of butchering names.
Mr. Chair, I did call, I did call Mr. Kostreba, he's on his way, but we can take item four for now.
Yep, awesome. Alright, so, Mike Lutkin?
Yep.
Yes. Alright, to consider request for a conditional use, low bar. To consider request for a conditional use permit submitted by Mike Lutkin of Watkins, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8, 6.21, and 9.8.5F of Sterns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance Number 439, to operate an eating and drinking establishment, Lutkin's Bar, in the rural townsite zoning district. The property is part of Lot 1, Block 3, Townsite of St. Nicholas, lying west of County Road 21 in section 15 of Luxembourg Township. The address is 15904 County Road 21 of Watkins, Minnesota. Members who visited the site? I did. Dave?
No.
Jacob?
I did.
Rich?
Yes, I did.
Tara? Joe?
Yes.
Alright, staff, staff report.
Alright, thank you. So, as a little bit of background, this building has been around since, it was built around 1900. The main level was a bar and grocery store and the upper level has been vacant for many years, well, the whole building had been vacant for many years. So in 2017, Mike received a variance and a construction permit to increase the height of the building and make the upper level living quarters, so that is now a residence. And so the desire now is to reopen the main floor as a eating and drinking establishment. No new construction, exterior construction is proposed, no expansion is proposed. The property is in shoreland, across the road to the east is School Lake, which is a natural environment lake, but of course, this is not riparian, it's not on the lake. It's right on County Road 21. So getting into the performance standards for eating and drinking establishment, the facility does meet the requirements of the lot size, transportation management plan, parking, so to touch on parking, as you know, the building is right on the road and so the parks, or the highway department, excuse me, has reviewed a plan for some on-street parking, which was in your packet, and that'll provide a number of sites, parking spots, and then across the road, the church has okayed parking in the church parking lot as well. That approval from the church is valid until 2030, so then in five years, we'll just request a renewal of that approval from the church. If for some reason the church would decline to allow parking there, then the conditional use permit would expire basically, or would be null and void. So, the general, let's see. Screening is not necessary, this is an existing mixture of commercial and residential area, so screening is not required. The eating and drinking establishment does need to be licensed by our department, and Mike's been in touch with our licensing staff on that. The building does need to meet the handicap accessibility code, and our building inspector, David Barsodi, has communicated with Mike, so that's in process. Nuisances, looking at the nuisance part of the ordinance, there's not a current plan to have outdoor music. The applicant would like that option in the future, so you can discuss that when it comes to the conditions, setting parameters for that. And we already discussed the parking, there's ample parking available. Sign regulations, there's a plan to put a sign on the building with the business name, and that'll just need to meet the size requirements of the ordinance, or the size limitations. So getting to the proposed conditions then, number one, meeting accessibility code and submitting an accessibility certificate form signed by a licensed building official before we would issue the license to operate. The parking is shown, and approval from the St., Church of St. Nicholas to use their parking shall be renewed on or before April 1st of 2030 and submitted in writing to the county. If the Church of St. Nicholas parking lot becomes unavailable, the CUP shall be considered null and void. Any sign on the property must meet the sign standards of the ordinance. In relation to the septic system, so they did install a system planning for this to eventually be open again as a bar and restaurant, but the conditions that we would request would be between three and six months of operation. The owner must arrange to test the effluent prior to the soil discharge on three separate occasions during peak use, and then submit the results to the department. If the concentrations exceed C-strength waste, then the system must be retrofitted within 10 months to address the high-strength waste effluent. And then secondly, install a water meter and collect water meter readings daily for 90 days, submit those results to the department within six months of operating the system to show that the system is large enough to handle the flows from the establishment. They're optimistic it'll, it'll all be fine, but we do need that documentation just to ensure that it's going to be sufficient, the septic will be sufficient to handle the business. So number five, consider setting a limit on the number of days outdoor music is allowed and a limit on the, on the hours outdoor music is allowed. Seven, in relation to noise, outdoor music is only allowed on the property provided the noise levels comply with Minnesota rules. Noise levels exceeding Minnesota rules chap, chapter 7030 are considered a violation of the rule and county ordinance and CUP. When outdoor music is occurring on the property, the permittee shall guarantee the state noise standard chapter, Minnesota rules chapter 30 is met at the property line. In order to ensure this, the following would be required. Sound level monitoring performed when there's outdoor music according to the measurement procedures in the guide to noise control in Minnesota. Sound level meter and microphone shall meet section three of the guide. Testing procedure shall meet section three of the guide. And sound level reports for the applicable noise area classification, as found in Minnesota rule, shall be generated in real time as described in the report, as described by the MPCA, and then reports kept for a minimum of a year and then provided to the county upon request. That's all I have.
Applicant, name and address, please.
Mike Lutkin. I live at 15904 County Road 21, Watkins, that's the same location.
Any additional feedback or comments?
Nothing too much, was very, very thorough there. The only thing I would say is that I've been in my family for over 100 years. My great-great uncle built the place, and I'm just looking to get the place open again, so.
Questions from the commission?
Yes, I guess I do, and did we have notification out to the neighbors? Was that taken?
Yep, a quarter mile.
And did the notification include the music?
The notification stated that there was a request for an eating and drinking establishment.
Correct. And so with that, I don't know if we necessarily would be able to grant the music to happen, or I would, would allow that music to take place, because I don't know if, you know, if those folks actually had had that. I don't know how much of an issue is that for you, Nick? I'll, I'll tell you what, I want you to be open, and I hope to be out there myself, okay?
Appreciate that.
The concern I have is things we've had happen in the past when it relates to the open-ended of music. Also notifying the church, they were notified about your, your proposal, and of course, I have no problem you using that, and actually people behaved themselves crossing the road there to get over there, you know, that, that's in a number of locations. But I'm, I'm really concerned what would happen when we talk about large number of people. So if we're going to talk about 500, 600, 700 people there for outdoor music, that could be an issue. So, so here's where I am with that. I, I don't think it's the board's position here to be making the, the CUP. I think you should be able, you know, come to us and tell us, you know, what it is you want, and then adjust it there. We ran into some complications and some interesting discussion and angst within the board over a proposal that was similar to this, where the neighbors didn't know what was going on, and then it was dropped on them. So I'd be very concerned about moving forward with the music. So my recommendation would be is actually, is to maybe have that more specifically and renotice it to the neighbors and come back and see if it's fine. But if you just want to go with the bar, if you're thinking that, well, I can come back and do the music later, then let's go forward.
Yeah, let's do that. I'm sorry, yeah, let's move forward without the music at that, at this point then, and I'll come back if we need to move forward with that.
Sure. And, and I'll tell you what, you know, if it's, if it's something small where you've got music indoors, obviously that's a little, no big deal, and if it's on the patio and the neighbors don't complain, that's not a big deal. But when we start having 3, 4, 500 people out there and it becomes a rock concert and the neighbors didn't know about that, that's a problem.
Yeah, and I'll tell you that there's, there's no plans of that.
Okay.
It would be, you know, smaller.
And that's, and that's why, that's what we would put in there. Also, you understood about the monitoring, you'd have to invest into that monitoring, that could be pricey.
Right.
But, but maybe your business will grow that way.
Well, we would hope.
Okay, alright.
Question on the, the residence. So when I drove past, there was somebody on the patio above. Hi.
That was probably me.
Okay. On the, is that a two-story residence? Is there a main floor and above, or is it just on the second floor?
The, the second level there, but there is a residence on the main level as well that's separate from this, that residence.
So are the accesses to the two residential units separate from the proposed access for the bar?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Other questions from the commission members?
Question for the applicant. On the suggested, what is it, the recommended actions, numbers seven and eight? Are you opposed to either of those at all if you were to come back?
Opposed to like the sound monitoring, that kind of stuff? I'm not, no. I'm not, no.
It's interesting to me to note of the partnership with the Saint Nicholas Church, I was pastor at the Gregle United Methodist Church, and we have the Rock Tavern across the way, and we issued a same sort of covenant, so it's actually not that unusual to do something like that in partnership, so I know some people had kinda thought that, but it's, yeah, it's a very nice partnership when you can work together, community, ecumenical, that sort of stuff.
I think it's Stearns County.
It's Stearns County, yeah, and I was in Todd, so it's practically sterned at that point anyway, too.
I'm excited about bringing the place back, so.
Thank you.
And you have an anticipated opening day?
Depends how fast I can get, stuff like this taken care of, I guess. I was hoping for June, we'll see.
Field trip.
Other questions, comments from the board? Hearing none, open to the public? Same rules, approach the podium? Second offer, open to the public? Third and final offer, correspondence?
There was none.
Oh, okay. Motion to close?
I'll make the motion, close the public.
Thanks, Rich, second. Anybody want a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dave, closing the public hearing, further discussion? Hearing none, let's move on to the findings of fact. Where are my findings of fact? Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with the land use zoning ordinance 439, sections 4.8, 6.21, and 9.8.5, letter F.
Thanks, Rich. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please list appropriate sections, yea or nay.
Mr. Chair, I believe it conforms to the comprehensive plan, business goals number four, and rural business goal number two.
Thanks, Tara. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not?
It is, and not to be glib, it is a Stearns County town, you have to have a bar, a Catholic church, I think that's written into the law, actually, but no, it very much fits the atmosphere of the community.
I think I should thank you for that, Jake.
Anytime.
How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied? We have the conditions, plus we've stricken the music and outdoor entertainment, so, I believe we have at least. Other issues pertinent to this matter? Hearing none, entertain the motion.
Excuse me, Nick, you know, then you are gonna go with seven days a week, and you're gonna go with those hours there, correct? I mean, that's, that's what you should, you know, it says, well, you'd like to start Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays, that's, you know, kind of irrelevant to us, you can, once we give you the hours, you can do whatever you want.
Yeah, yep.
So you are gonna go then from seven days a week, 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM?
Correct, yes.
Entertain a motion, in favor or opposed?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve.
To clarify, the six conditions?
The six conditions, yes.
Rich, so we have a motion to recommend approval with the six conditions, striking, consider the limited number of days of outdoor music, and striking, consider setting a limit on the hours that outdoor music is allowed.
Mr. Chair, so then are we at four conditions?
Well, you got the.
You got parking signage.
Accessibility, parking signage, septic, noise, and noise. So the two bottom ones, noise also?
Those are for, those are related to outdoor music. I would suggest.
One through four?
Striking, five through eight, and then just adding a condition that outdoor music is not allowed unless the CUP is amended, or something like that.
Friendly amendment, Rich?
Friendly, friendly amendment.
Okay, so, second.
I'll second that.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side?
Opposed.
That's four to one, three to one. Three to one. Three, I didn't vote.
Tara.
Can we get a roll call, please?
Just for the record.
Roll call, Jason, I did not vote. Jacob?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Tara?
No.
Three to one.
I just wanted to put on the record, I'm not opposed to you opening this bar, I'm opposed to limiting the conditions here, so I would just, would like to say no.
Thank you. All right, motion passes, this will go before the full board of the county on May 6th. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Kostriba is here now.
Okay, Mr. Kostriba, take the seat of the applicants, we'll jump right into this.
Sorry for being late.
Nope. We're glad you're here. All right, so agenda item number two, going backwards a bit, to consider a rezoning request submitted by Jeffrey Kostriba LLC, Holdingford, Minnesota, according to sections 4.10 of the Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, number 439, to rezone approximately 25.87 acres from the commercial zoning district to the agricultural 40 zoning district. The property is part of the northeast quarter, northwest quarter, and part of the southeast quarter, northwest corner, lying north of State Highway 23, in section 29 of Munson Township. Everyone who visited, I did, Dave?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Tara?
No.
Joe?
Yes.
All right, staff report.
This is a 25-acre field that the township of Munson has actually granted an interuse permit to mine on this property, and then upon realizing that it's owned commercial, and commercial doesn't allow mining, we're backtracking now, and Mr. Kostriba's requesting the rezoning to A40, so the mining hasn't started yet, waiting to see this through the process. The access, obviously, is off of Highway 23, the property is fairly flat, does have a bit of a swell in slope to the northeast. The surrounding area, as you know, has got a number of gravel pits in the area, six homes within a half-mile, one feedlot. The zoning is, there's commercial both east and west, but then the rest of the area is zoned green agricultural 40, or egg 80. As far as development opportunities, the current commercial does not allow homes, and if rezoned, that also would not have a building entitlement because it's not a parcel of record, it was split off of farm in the last few years. On the future land use map, it is in an egg/rural area. We did not run a lease score because we're not rezoning away from egg, we're actually going to eggs. Munson Township reviewed the request and recommended approval. And that's all I have.
All right, applicant introductions. Name and address.
My name and address?
Yeah.
Jeff Kostriba, my address is 19329440th Street, Holdingford, Minnesota, 56340.
Thank you, anything to add to the staff report?
Nope.
Okay, commission numbers, any comments, questions? For staff or... Okay, open the public hearing. Same rules? Open the public hearing.
I did just get one letter from Mendat.
Yes.
Just said there should not be any issues from Mendat for the rezoning request, signed by Tom Kroschink, principal planner, District 3, Mendat.
Great, thank you. Last chance, public comments. Hearing none, entertain a motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Tara, thank you.
I will second that.
Rich, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing's closed, further discussion? Hearing none, findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it is inconsistent with zoning ordinance 439, section 4.10.
Just point of clarification, so question for staff on this. So we're doing the rezoning, are they gonna come back for a permit for this, then?
Actually, with, in Munson Township, the township handles permits for mining if they're not in shoreland.
Okay.
So they don't need to come back to the county.
All right, thank you for the clarification. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county? Please look, list applicable sections, yea or nay.
Mr. Chair, I believe it conforms to the aggregate resource policies, number two.
Thank you, Tara. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, there are a number of gravel operations, mining on both sides of the Highway 23, so it fits very well there.
Great, thank you, Rich. How has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will
Well, did due diligence, because you can't mine commercially, so he came before the board for the proper channels.
Perfect, thank you. Other issues pertinent to this matter?
The township has agreed that the rezoning should go through.
And then also, second, the township will also approve the mining permit once this is done, so. All right.
Mr. Kostriba, I got a question for you.
Yes.
I see all those other pits there, and you know, we got 23 done there, and I'm just wondering, you know, why we're extending the gravel sand. It's a precious commodity, and I think we should be using it.
Right.
And I like it that we're using it, so if we need it, let's use it. But is there, are there any plans I don't know about, usually, I know big road projects that are happening.
No, I own Albany ready mix, so I'm just gonna use that to supply my ready mix plant with rock and sand, so it'll be a great fit for me.
Oh, okay, that, that's, now I know.
Yep.
And good luck with that, and we, again, we'd rather see that coming locally instead of bringing it in from great distances, so yeah, so good luck with it.
Great, thank you.
Yep.
Entertain a motion to approve or deny, recommend approval or denial?
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Tara, for the motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Rich, seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, this will be before the county board on May 6th, thank you for coming.
Great, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Last chance, I can do this. All right, Chris Schiffler.
Yeah, I have no idea.
To consider a request for an after-the-fact conditional use permit submitted by Shady's Property Investment and Pelican Lake LLC, Albany, Minnesota, according to sections 4.8, 9.9, and 10.2.4A of Stearns County Land Use and Zoning Ordinance, to expand the use including an outdoor band shelter and outdoor vents in the residential R1 zoning district. The property under consideration is located in the southeast quarter of the southeast corner, lying southeast of County Road 154, in section 6 of Avon Township. The address is 18527 County Road 154, Avon, Minnesota. Members who visited, I did not this time, but I have several times in the past. Dave?
No.
Jacob?
Yes.
Rich?
I didn't mind.
Tara?
Been there a number of times.
And Joe?
Not this time, but I've been there before.
Staff report.
Okay, I'm not gonna go through all of the details, because you've all been on the commission the last couple of times this was here, but the changes, so the item was last before the planning commission in February, it was tabled, and the request was to have the applicant go back to the township and work through their noise ordinance and get a positive recommendation from the township. So he was able to do that, Mr. Schiffler did that March 5th, the township provided the following recommendation related to outdoor music. The Cockler, Clocker moved to recommend the planning commission approve a CUP for Shady's Sunset Bay on the condition that there are no more than 10 outdoor events per year between 8:00 PM and 10:00 PM, no more than every other weekend, and that Shady's follows all pertinent Stearns County CUP guidelines and Minnesota statute 7030. Rassier seconded, two in favor, one opposed, motion carried. So that was the update, since it was last before you.
It is bothering me, I think we just need to do a remove of the, remove the item from the table so that we can move forward with it, so.
Okay.
That should have been in here, that it was a tabled item, and we didn't put that on the agenda, so I apologize for that, so if we could remove it for the table for review.
Do we get a motion, can I do that through, all right, commission to detable the item?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor of detabling the item?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, clean, we're good. Return to the staff report.
All right, very good, thank you for that. So the request, then, is to allow use of the outdoor band shelter, which is an expansion of the conditional use permit, have outdoor music events, and use the outdoor bar. So with that, the suggested conditions, if approved, would be to address the number and the hours of outdoor music, so what we would suggest to mirror the township recommendation is stating, outdoor music is allowed until 8:00 PM, 10 special events are allowed per year, no more frequent than every other weekend, and during the special events, outdoor music may occur until 10:00 PM. Outdoor music is only allowed on the property provided the noise levels comply with Minnesota rule, and noise levels exceeding that are considered a violation of the ordinance and the CUP. Number three, when outdoor music is occurring on the property, the permittee shall guarantee the noise standard, in Minnesota rules, chapter 7030 is met at the property line, by doing the following, the sound level monitoring performed when there's outdoor music according to the guide to noise control in Minnesota, sound level meter and microphone shall be, shall meet section three of the guide, the testing procedure shall meet section three of the guide, and the sound level reports shall be generated in real time, kept for a minimum of one year, and then provided to the county and township upon request. Condition number four, addressing parking, based on the number of parking spaces, a maximum of 393 seats are allowed at any one time, including both indoor and outdoor seats, unless additional parking is approved by the department. And then five, a construction site permit is required for the band shelter, and that application shall be submitted by June 1st of 2025.
Thank you for that, so applicant, name and address.
Chris Schiffler, 103 Power Drive, Albany, Minnesota, 56307.
Anything to add to the staff report?
Nope, I have nothing to add at this time.
Okay, commission questions, comments?
I just appreciate that we were able to work with the township on this. Yeah, that makes a big difference, I think.
Other questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, Chris, what about attendance, you got 393 seats, so what does that mean for his numbers there at the property?
As far as like outdoor for events, or what?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. The, a lot of the confusion came on what an actual band is, and that's kind of a lot of confusion when it comes to this stuff, as far as when somebody says they're gonna have a band, just listening to the fellow that was in here before, he, a band is outside, and they have drums and a guitar and everything, where we weren't looking for that, and we were only looking for one of those events, or two of those events, and that's what they gave us, was 10 until 10 o'clock, but bands kind of in the bar business is like one or two-man guys with guitars, because you can't afford the other ones, they're just, they're so expensive, so 393 people, yeah. Our, what we're having isn't made to draw people, it's made to keep people there, so while you're eating dinner, you can listen to something, so.
So are we looking at putting a cap on that? Do you wanna put a cap on the number there?
No, I think what the, what the township recommended was fair.
Well, I mean, 393, does 400 sound better?
Oh, sure, as an even number, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, based on the parking available, 393 would be the cap.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, based on the parking available, 393 would be the cap, unless they were able to acquire a lease to have parking somewhere else.
Okay. Well, that, that, okay.
Explains that number.
I'll take care of that one.
That doesn't mean people can't come with a boat, does that count their boat coming across the water? I don't know.
If I land too, if I see.
They sit in their boat, George.
Other questions from the commission members? Public hearing, anyone from the public here to comment? Please, as you come up, state your name and address before you give your comment. And please stay focused on Shady's.
Hi, my name's, excuse me, Scott Miklitz. Wife, and Gail and I live just next door, just to the west, so I don't know if the map is here, you can see kinda where we're at. And then Gail is, of course, in Angalski, they've owned the Pelican Lake, you know, they had the resorts for many years, and, and her sisters have the entire piece and about 1,100 feet of shoreline along there, but we're right next to them. The problem I have, so the 40 years I've been around there, you know, it was the landing, and then it was Revs, and now it became Shady's. 2011, I built a house, last year I put an addition on the house and went through all the permits and all the, the, excuse me, surveys and things that normally are done with a construction project, and everything was fine. Shady's, he bought, the current owners bought a bar that had non-permit outside structures, including a band shell. And so there's no guarantees that he was gonna get a township approval. And now that the township has approved, not only, I mean, the band shell doesn't even meet the, you know, the boundaries it's built with. And so my concern is going forward that even for the county, I mean, you have 34 townships in Stearns County, and if you have somebody buy a commercial business and then don't tell, you know, without permitting, build structures, a band shell, come to a township board, have two friendly township board members approve that, and not only that, allow 10 outdoor concerts. I think there's a precedent being set here that concerns me. Gail and I just made this our residence, our permanent residence about two months ago. And so the conditions that have been discussed, you mentioned earlier about, you know, 300 people, 398 is what, you know, you can do. And so this is Pelican Lake, you know, this is a quiet community, this is residential R1. The, the facilities that have been there have been good neighbors. But this is a significant change to have live music outside. He says, you know, what it's gonna be, but what it's permitted for. So my concerns are, if it is permitted, I think 10 is too many, to be honest. I mean, I'm like right next door. And maybe start with two or three, and see how it goes and see if there's some issues. If it goes well for a year, let them earn some more. 10 o'clock at night, I mean, all of us that live on a lake, any lake, I mean, you wanna go down at 8 o'clock or whatever else. The nicest part of the day is when you sit at the end of the dock and watch the sun go down without your neighbor's loud music blaring in your ears. He says, could be nice music, there's no conditions on what could happen and what may happen. Especially current ownership, future ownership. So I mean, that's, that's what we're concerned about here. The decipal measuring is fine. Currently, the Stearns County Sheriff's Department does not carry test equipment with them. So if the sheriff's department is called for a noise complaint, they have no means in their vehicles to, to measure if there's a violation. They would have their own, but a sheriff can't. A sheriff is gonna issue, you know, a citation or a cease and desist. Us as neighbors should not have to be responsible for monitoring our decipal and calling the sheriff if and when there's a noise complaint. I think, I think, to be honest, I think the sheriff's department should be equipped. I've been looking at decipal, and I mean, you can buy them for 50 bucks, it's not that big a deal. And then I think if there are violations, I don't know if you can make it part of the conditional use permit, but put some teeth into it, as far as the first violation, maybe a $500 fine. Second violation, suspend any outdoor concerts for 60 days. Third violation, maybe for a year. And the fourth violation, four strikes and you're out, pull the permit. Because if there is problems, everybody needs to agree to what's happening and what their ramifications are when violations occur. I don't know how you can control, and Mr. Schiffler, I've never met you before, you know, how you can control what all is gonna happen. You have 150 people outside at 9 o'clock at night singing with the band, you know, this is, I guess, the bottom line is, the Angalski family, 70 years, we've been there, Gail and I, 42 years of marriage. We built our house, I'm nearing retirement, and everything has been good on Pelican Lake. It's a lovely place to be and a lovely place to live, lovely place to retire. And now all of a sudden I have a new neighbor who's gonna have outdoor concerts in my backyard. And so that's disturbing to me, and it's disturbing, I think, to not only me, but I've talked to several neighbors, and, you know, I don't think I'm the only one that's a little upset about it. So, and especially when you have a property with non-permitted structures. If that band shell would have been built with permits, or the county, or the, our residents would have had time to respond to a band shell, you know, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't, but without a band shell, maybe he's not having bands. You know, outdoor bar and patio both were built without permits. And so what you're doing is allowing a business with non-permitted structures permission to go ahead based on two votes from a township. That to me is a little concerning. So that's how I feel about it, you know, you, you work hard all your life, you come to a place, you hope to retire, and any of you, wherever you live, probably don't want your next door neighbor playing outdoor music in the backyard. So, right next door, and it's never been that way. And he bought the business and it wasn't permitted that way. And so that's something to consider. Any questions?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address.
My name is David Counter, 8354 360th Street, St. Joseph, Minnesota. And I live right next to Sunny Mary Meadows. And I'm trying to compare this meeting here with this fellow that I don't know. But she's bait, she baits, she baits and then changes her mind. The township, St. Winnebago Township, I feel.
Is that, this is, that's a different topic, we're talking about Shady's here?
Yes, but I know, I'm trying to compare that I hope this committee treats him not as fairly as you did with Sunny Mary Meadows and gave her everything. I hope you treat the Avon Township members way better than you did the St. Winnebago Township members, please.
All right, thanks for your input.
And these, oh, the other thing, these cups, they should be UIFs, not CUPs. So they have to come back in a few years and revisit how they are going. And these bands, outdoor bands, there needs to be a noise monitoring device that the owners have to pay for and keep track of this music level noise on their own. It shouldn't be up to other people to take care of it.
Okay.
And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Other comments from the public? Correspondence? Anything, Jennifer?
Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission, nothing new was received, so it would just be the items that you had received and reviewed in the past. I don't know if you want me to highlight them again, or?
They're in the file.
What's that?
They're in the file.
Correct.
Yep. All right, any other comments from the public? Hearing done, entertain the motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Rich moves. Second, second by Jacob, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes, further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question for staff. Regarding to the public comment portion, can you just clarify the conditions? Can you put conditions on for enforcement on these or not, or what is the enforcement conditions on a CUP? Just clarification on that.
We have not put any additional conditions as to how we manage enforcement. We typically follow the ordinance on that, we have not had more restrictive standards. It's a great question, I don't know if I know the complete answer to if we could add more restriction to enforcement.
And?
Mr. Chair, Shelley, we do have a policy, but it's a letter, I believe, of reprimand on the first offense, isn't there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Persky, yes, we do, the process is, is that if we have a violation that's confirmed, we then send a letter to the applicant, discuss with the applicant, what can we do? Depends on the violation, how do we manage it, is there a better way for us to address it? And then, and then we would review if they have another violation, or it's consistent in, in happening, then we would seek to revoke the conditional use permit. That's the typical, we don't have additional, as indicated, levels of response for violations at this time.
Is that because the ordinance doesn't lay those out?
Yes.
And then, Mr. Chair, one more question. Is it the staff's responsibility to figure out how to revoke a conditional use permit?
The ordinance lays out the process to revoke, it is a bit up to staff discretion if we receive a complaint and it's validated that it's a violation. As Shelley indicated, we would send a letter, if the property owner works with us and we come into compliance, we move on. If the violation repeats itself, at some point we would bring it up to the planning commission to consider revocation. But that's not precisely laid out, like how many strikes do you get before you come back? So it's a little bit of a judgment call.
Typically, consistent behavior or a lack of compliance with a requirement would be the one where we would say, you need to come back in. And then we bring them back for a hearing in front of the planning commission, which is noticed, so all neighbors could be there and express their concerns. So at that point, you hear the applicant's information and you'd hear any concerned parties. And then you would decide if you want to recommend revocation, and then that would go to the county board.
Okay, thank you, I'm just trying to make sure that there's like, I just wanted to understand what the clear process is before an action is taken, and it sounds like to me, there's still a lot of ambiguity, ambiguity in how that process is laid out because the ordinance isn't clear.
I think it's a matter of what the violation is, sometimes violation is really clear and it's easy to find. Oh, you're over the line, you have this thing on there. I think noise as a nuisance is a challenge, and we, we do the best we can, typically it's violations, and then we check noise monitoring. We go out and do our own noise monitoring as well, so if we haven't had a violation, there's nothing to act on. And again, perception and, and actual violation are two different things. There's a lot of people who think the noise is really loud, or a particular genre of music can, can vary when we get complaints, and, and we've seen that. So I think it's important to recognize that without evidence, it's hard to manage. So that's why we ask that, we're in put in now conditions that would say you need the noise monitoring, and then we verify that, we don't just take their word for it, we do also go out and check.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Hearing done, we'll move to the findings of fact. Is the proposal consistent with the zoning ordinance, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, it is consistent with the land use zoning ordinance 439 Sections 4.8 and 10.2.4, letter A.
Thank you. Does the proposal conform to the comprehensive plan of the county, list applicable sections, yea or nay?
Mr. Chair, I believe it's consistent with the comp plan business goal 1 and rural business goal 4.
Thank you Tara. Is the proposal compatible with the existing neighborhood, why or why not?
Mr. Chair, I think there's a couple of different ways you could go with this. It is consistent in the fact that it's still the existent, it's still the same business it's always been, or has been for
Decades.
Decades, yeah. The business model hasn't changed, but I would say it's inconsistent in the fact that it's mostly residential area around that property.
Jason Cron would be impressed.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, you know, within our rural tourism ordinance, you know, it says, do the hours of operation have an adverse effect on the neighboring properties? To what effect does that music have an adverse effect to the neighboring properties? You know, taking into consideration of the one testimony that we have and the previous township dissatisfaction with it. Yet, I mean, there's, there's the opportunity that, again, to have that music till 10 o'clock, there's no question about that. The number is, when does it become a nuisance, when does it become adverse to the neighborhood?
But you also have the ruling from the township that has approved this, so they, in some certain standard, are saying this is acceptable to this at that same point, if that makes sense.
All right, thanks for the feedback. Has the applicant demonstrated that standards and criteria stated in the ordinance will be satisfied?
Mr. Chair, I would say his effort to meet with the township and agree to operating procedures, that he's, they're reaching out there and trying to work with the local community, and the noise monitoring, I'm not gonna call it music monitoring, but you monitor the level of noise, that they do have a history with other properties that they own, that they, they have a good reputation.
Thanks, Rich. Other issues pertinent to this matter, any that are applicable? I just wanna say, Chris, you have done a nice job out there at, on the chain, so I hope we can do the same here, okay?
Absolutely.
All right, having moved through the findings of facts, I entertain the motion.
I will make a motion, we approve the conditional use permit.
Rich, Rick wins approval, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, are we gonna put a condition on?
Rich, does that, do you have the five conditions?
Where are those conditions here?
On five, I think?
Which five? My paper copy if you want to.
There are five recommended conditions, yes. Do you want me to summarize them, or?
Would you do that, please?
For the record. First one would be, outdoor music is allowed until 8:00 PM. 10 special events are allowed per year, no more frequent than every other weekend, and during special events, outdoor music may occur until 10:00 PM. Outdoor music is only allowed provided the noise levels comply with Minnesota rule. If they exceed Minnesota rule, it's a violation of the rule, the county ordinance and the CUP. Number three, when outdoor music is occurring, the permittee shall guarantee the state noise standard is met at the property line. To ensure this, they would do sound level monitoring in accordance with the Minnesota Guide to Noise Control. The sound level meter and mic shall meet Section 3 of the Guide. The testing procedure shall meet Section 3 of the Guide. And the sound level reports shall be kept a minimum of one year and then provided to the county upon request. Four touches on the parking, a maximum of 393 seats are allowed due to the number of outdoor parking spaces on site, unless additional parking is approved by the department. And then five, a construction site permit is required for the band shell application to be submitted by June 1st of 25.
So Rich, is your motion inclusive of those?
Yes.
Second for Rich's motion, inclusive of the five conditions?
I'll second.
Dave, seconds, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. This will go to the board on May 6th. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. So, those are the agenda items for approval. Next is discussion between Becky and Bethy Jo regarding review of the proposed feedlot related ordinance changes.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, so we are looking at doing some changes within the land use and zoning ordinance 439 relating specifically to feedlots. These changes, we had presented them to the Derry Advisory Committee, which was in February, and then we took them to the Feedlot Review Committee, which was in March, and again, in April. With a recommendation by the Planning Commission, the proposed changes will be brought before the county board to set a public hearing date and then hold a public hearing likely in July. So some of those changes are basic cleanup ones, and then there are some very specific ones. So one of the ones is in section 4.6 regarding the Feedlot Review Committee. Currently, it just has conditional use permits listed in there, so you'll see on the screen in red, it will now include interim use permits. And then in section six, right now, there is a requirement for feedlot applicants that are requesting between 500 and 699 animal units with their permit application in the A40 zoning district only to go in front of the Feedlot Review Committee. And what the Feedlot Review Committee does is just review, we do a staff report, they review what they are requesting, they don't make a recommendation on it. So we are just looking at eliminating that and those sites because they are less than 700 animal units, they wouldn't require a conditional use permit, and so it's just the FRC section. So we would be eliminating FRC for feedlots, 500 to 699 in a permit app in the A40 zoning district. Section 6.8.3D, three, just improving some of the wording there, so there's hutches and structures is kind of all mixed in in some of the sections, and then we do have definitions in the front of our ordinance for certain things, and hutches is not one of them, so just looking at cleaning that up so that structures is in the replacement of hutches. And then looking at cleaning it up to include that is up to equal in size to livestock structure for when we're talking about portable livestock shelters and open lots. Right now, the way it is worded in the current ordinance is that if a applicant is asking for a six by six building that's portable to house chickens in it, and they want to have a 10 by 12 open lot attached, let's say a roofed enclosed dog kennel for their chickens, by the way that the current ordinance is worded, they would need a permit for that even though it's all portable and less than 433 square feet. So it just try to clean that up so that if people want to have a goat or chickens in a portable structure that between the structure and the open lot just needs to equal the 433 square feet or up to that, I guess, for the open lot. It doesn't have to be the same size as a building or vice versa. The next item for changing is just some subscript stuff regarding section 6.8.3G, which is the manure application plus use setbacks. So that chart there is what you would be seeing in today's ordinance other than what's shown in blue. So those specific subscripts under city limits within one mile of irrigation for manure application, and then residential dwellings, 1,000 feet for irrigation of manure. We would be looking at adding, unless exempted in writing by the affected city council for the city limit one. And then number seven, the subscripts, number sevens would be unless exempted in writing by the affected residential landowner in hyphen landowner. So if there's multiples within that 1,000 feet, they would have to get written permission from all those within that circumference. And then you'll see a couple numerical changes there above the subscripts six and seven at the bottom, and those are just housekeeping cleanup things regarding some additions and changes in the ordinance currently to reflect that. One of the more bigger items, I guess, is section 6.8.6B, which is the animal unit density requirements section of the ordinance. We're looking at just loosening that as far as animal unit density for smaller parcels in agricultural districts only. Our rationale behind that as staff is that we have reviewed the variances since 2015, and those have been granted five out of five times since those folks have came in asking for a forgiveness from the animal unit density restriction in the current ordinance and chart. And then we do see an increase in hobby farms throughout the county, and then also to mirror our comprehensive land use plans, goals, and policies, and those are those ag-related policies and pillars. So the top chart is what our current requirements look like. So you'll be able to see one to 1.99 acres in egg zoning only is allowed .3 animal units. So in theory, to think of that, it's like three sheep. So a sheep is .10, so it'd be three sheep, handful of chickens. You wouldn't get to .3, you'd have to have quite a few chickens to get to the .3. Two to 2.99 acres is one animal unit, so one, you know, feeder steer, one full-size horse, for example. Three to 4.99 acres is allowed two. Five to 6.99 is three. Seven to 8.99 is allowed four animal units, and then nine to 9.99 is six animal units. So below that is what the new proposed chart would look like in egg zoning districts. One to 1.99 would allow one animal unit. So like I said, that would be, you know, 10 sheep, one full-size horse, one feeder steer, or a combination of any other animal units to equal that one. Two to 2.99 would be three, and then three to 4.99 would be six, and then five to 6.99 acres for a parcel would be allowed up to the 9.99 animal units. So as you can see, the rest of the chart is dark, which means parcels that are zoned egg, seven acres or more, would not be restricted to any animal unit density. They could ask for more than the 9.99 if they are seven acres or more.
Chair, how does this compare to other counties?
Um, that is a good question, Mr. Commissioner. I guess that's something that we, you know, the information that we have provided in the packets or that I have here today with me does not include that. If that's, that's probably something that we could look into for you.
I'm just wondering, you know, we're basically tripling numbers, correct? You know, and I'm just wondering where other counties might be on that, and if it's problematic. I don't know.
Mr. Chair, a question for staff. On the numbers that you're getting here, I guess, following up with Krishna Persky, are these, are these tied any guidelines for like, tied any guidelines for animal units per head on a piece of property, depending on what kind of animal they are? Like you can have, you know, if you're going to do like managed grazing or something like that, you have so many animal units of a certain type that are recommended per, of a, on each piece of property, not harming the piece of property with your animal units, basically, before you're creating a feedlot.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mrs. Ostendorf, so we, under the feedlot permitting protocols, is we cannot permit what we would presume to be a pollution issue. So we have some tools in our toolbox to be able to use, other than, you know, group staff discussions, you know, multiple people having the ability to look at the property, but we have a thing called Min Farm as well. So that looks at slopes, distances. Again, the permits are issued to the land, so then when ownership does change, those permits do travel with the land. And then at any time, regardless of the size of feedlot, if it becomes a pollution issue, then they fall under the requirement to correct those. So if that means, you know, changing to a different management style, more grazing, less open lot, maybe total confinement, those would be the things that the owner at that time would have to explore and request any permits if those would be needed for any improvements. So I know you had mentioned the grazing thing. Grazing itself doesn't need a permit because that's outside the scope of the feedlot definition by Minnesota 7020 rules. But I know historically, we don't, we don't require specifically one acre for one animal unit. You know, someone could house 10 sheep, which is 10 animal units, in a total confinement barn and feed them hay all year and probably potentially be environmentally sound, you know, doing that.
Yeah. That makes sense to me. I'm just, I'm just wondering, just if somebody decides they have three acres and want to put six horses on it, then all of a sudden, in a year, you've got a mud hole. So I'm just wondering.
Bethy, similar kind of, so these are individual parcels. Is there any consideration of aggregate numbers? So if you have a 10-acre lot that has 10-acre parcels on it, and suddenly everyone's popping a horse on there, you've now got 10 horses on 10 acres, which is a lot different than one horse. So is there any look at the aggregate impact that this might be having?
We do have, I mean, we do have one, one map, I suppose, we could pull up that kind of shows what, when we talk about some of the changes. So this is, this is kind of an example of what you're referring to, Mr. Chair. So you'll kind of see the parcels that are less than 10 acres in, in example within the county in the egg zoning district. So the corresponding colors, you can see down on the bottom in the middle of the map displayed what those colors are relating to, and then to the right of it, you can see what those animal units would be allowed. So you'll see where the reds are, those are less than one acre in size, so there would be no changes for that, AKA no, nothing allowed on there now, and it wouldn't be allowed if they're less than one acre. You'd see the kind of more middle-ish, orangish, a little darker orangish, so that's one to 1.99, and that would be going from basically three sheep to 10 sheep, you know, for an example, or yes, one, one full horse from three sheep. And then you get to the lighter orange, those are the parcels in the example that are two to 2.99 acres, and yes, you'd be looking at one animal unit going up to three animal units, and, and then you can see where the darker, as you go through the chart, the yellows would be changing from two to six, and then the really kind of lighter limey green would be three to the 9.99, and then the more, the two darker colored greens would change to be restricted to now, to be unlimited with the new proposal. So this kind of gives you a little bit of a visual of what you were kind of asking, Mr. Rehnerman. Again, we issue feedlot permits with the ability to not be able to issue them if there is compliance issues on the site. Now, again, if the permit's issued and management changes hands, or if things change and things become a pollution concern, then the owners are responsible for correcting that. And we have, like I said, there's some tools that we do use currently now. Those are the same tools that we, we would use for these sites as well. And then, yes, some folks that do have compliance issues now do have the opportunity to apply for an interim permit, and that locks them in for two years to fix that pollution issue, and then extend that for 90 days, and then hopefully, within that timeframe, they can correct it or apply for a cost share potentially, if that's an option, or explore other third-party, you know, sources for funding. Any other questions about the map? Okay. So then, yes, under the chart would just be the blue wording to update and represent what that chart above it is showing. And then we did list the egg goals, kind of as we had mentioned, and those are just captured, you know, regarding the ordinance and the agricultural highlights to this. And then section 6.8.9B is the manure management plan review section of the ordinance, and we looked at just buttoning that up as well to include IUP. So what this section really says is no matter what permit you'd be asking for, sometimes, under the ordinance, it is required to submit a manure management plan. So as mentioned earlier tonight with the feedlot, that was 700 or more, that's, those sites do, are required to submit a manure management plan or a manure transfer plan as part of their complete application. Now, when you get to under 300 or certain sites that don't fall under an interim, or interim permit because of the pollution side of things, they don't necessarily need to submit an MMP, but this section of the ordinance does allow, if we feel the discretion, that one is needed for whatever reason it would be proximity for sensitive features, or like you had said, number of animal units for parcel size, to know that they do have a plan for that manure where it's going somewhere. So we just wanted to button that up and include those IUPs as well. And then update section four and nine of the current ordinance to reflect the correct numbering. We did have cannabis and other things added to it, so then that would just be some basic house cleaning stuff as well. And I think for right now, unless there's more questions regarding any of the information, that's all I have for you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Oh, for this, anyway, yeah. So any questions on this specifically still, before we jump to the next one?
Any additional questions on the proposed feedlot ordinance changes? Would you like a motion recommending concurring support?
I think you could do that all at the end.
Okay.
Because with the next one, if you want, I just, before we jump to the next one, if there was any questions on that, I
Just to be clear, this next page is, was not in your packet. It's in the slideshow here.
Yep. So I'll go through this one a little bit more in depth because you didn't have it in your packet. So why this is here now, and this is as stated in the other slide, is we went to Feedlot Review Committee twice regarding ordinance changes. This was mainly the reason for the April date for FRC. We focused on this. There has been some proposed date legislation to have an additional change relating to the definition of an animal feedlot, and that is that smaller, finer print, which states, "An animal feedlot means a lot or building or combination of lots and buildings intended for the confined feeding, breeding, raising, or holding of animals, and specifically designed as a confinement area in which manure may accumulate or where the concentration of animals is such that a vegetative cover cannot be maintained within the enclosure. For purpose of these parts, open lots used for feeding and rearing of poultry, poultry ranges shall be considered animal feed- for feeding and rearing of poultry, poultry ranges shall be considered animal feedlots. For purposes of these parts, petting zoos, horse stalls, riding arenas, open lots, and minke farms shall also be considered to be animal feedlots. Pastures shall not be considered animal feedlots. Animal feedlots shall include any manure storage structure." So there is no proposed ordinance language yet, because the exact change has kind of really been a moving target since this was brought up to the state legislators. And then we are just looking simply for a recommendation on whether to maintain the current ordinance in relation to 12 chickens or less. So that is what the specific wording is as far as the legislation. So if that proposed legislation is approved, it would create a statute that supersedes state rule, which that definition that I had read you is right out of Minnesota Feed, Feedlot Rules, in which those are 7020. And so, and then it would also supersede our county ordinance, and makes an exception for 12 chickens or less, which removes them from the requirements for animal feedlots, such as setbacks, zoning, and animal unit density. The legislation proposed, was proposed as a means of basically avoiding local zoning ordinances, prohibiting a small number of chickens in the state well setback. There is an indication that the draft legislation would be reworded, and it kind of has changed a couple of times already, hence why I'd said it's a little bit of a, been a moving target. It would require a jurisdiction to take action specifically for the exemption of the 12 chickens if, if it were approved versus the current language, making that definition change automatic for all jurisdictions, assuming their definition of animal feedlot was formed from the state rule definition, which ours is. The Feedlot Review Committee recommended making any necessary ordinance changes to maintain the current definition of animal feedlot in our ordinance, keeping the requirements for setbacks, zoning, animal unit density for 12 chickens or less. Any questions on that from the board?
So it talks about the ordinance, the statute would supersede our ordinance. So we would have to follow the statute, but the language in the ordinance would stay the same? Is that what I understand?
I think Becky can elaborate on that.
Mr. Chair, so our current county ordinance definition is made from the state rule. If the legislation goes through, however, where it would automatically require everyone to act on it, then that would supersede the rule, which supersedes ordinance. So in effect, if they don't clean up the language in the final draft and what's, whatever's passed, we will have to take some action to keep our ordinance the way it has been. So this is just looking for a recommendation of ordinance change to the county board to keep our ordinance, or keep our definition the way it is, regardless of how the legislation ends up being worded if passed. Does that make sense?
So how, so, so what would be the outcome of that?
So the way it's currently worded is to make every jurisdiction that does not want to make the exception for 12 chickens have to change their ordinance. And since we're already in the process of updating our feedlot ordinance, we wanted to bring this to you as part of the proposed recommendations, so that by the time we get to the public hearing at county board, hopefully the legislation will be done. And we, and if there's some changes that we need to make to keep our ordinance to include the 12 chickens as a part of the definition, we can act on that and not have to come back to you for another recommendation.
Mr. Chair, here's how my mind operates. In the last year or so, we've approved pretty good-sized dog candles. We had a farm, we had a actual barn that was converted over for dogs. So do we, does that fall under this type of ordinance as far as the dog feces and all this? I'm just thinking, because it's putting these, I'm gonna call them businesses in a rural setting, but if you have 30, 40 dogs...
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blenkish, the dogs are not considered, they're domesticated animal, or how are they worded? I can't remember how it's worded, but they are not for breed-
They're not traditional-
The dogs are not under the definition of animal feedlot.
Yeah. So, I mean, this was, I'm just, that's just thinking.
Yeah.
Is this going to apply to those businesses, or it stays away from it?
No. It would include, our animal feedlot definition does include rabbits, horses, dogs, geese, other, you know, kind of animals, but not dogs and cats, or exotics.
Okay. Thanks.
So, Mr. Chair, you were asking earlier, yes, we are looking for a recommendation from the planning commission on these changes for the county board, and then we'll set, go to the county board to set a public hearing, and do the noticing to the townships and municipalities and such.
So I would entertain a recommendation for or against to pass these recommendations onto the county board with either a recommendation, recommendation in support of these or in opposition to these?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, that we support the recommendation, the changes in the ordinance.
Motion from Rich to support the changes. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Second from Dave. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Becky, Joe, could you see if we could, just on those numbers, get some comparative data, just from some other counties?
Yeah, Mr. Commissioner, we can look. I know a lot of the local counties do have some of their ordinance online, so I can spend some time snooping around on that, and we'll follow up with that. Thank you.
Agenda 6B, outdoor music CUP conditions. Just couldn't let it go.
So I, I have a question. So I work with the Stearns County Sheriff's Offices, they're chaplain, and they often do measure decibels, so I don't know why it's said that they don't. So they must have tools, or either the officer that I'm with is, he's a big nerd, so I think he probably does go above and beyond, Nick, if you're watching, I'm sorry. But, so I think there must be some that at least have the tools to measure.
Yeah, we have, yeah, but as far as meeting the standard, you have to monitor for, for an hour.
Yeah. That's true. He's done that. Yep.
And to follow up on that, staff has and will go out and monitor, spot check-
Sure. Yeah.
-these sites as well, which does involve sitting there for an hour.
Because I think we've met up with some at some points, when the office receives a complaint, and then-
Yep.
-staff is-
Of course, the, the problem is, if staff goes out there and says, "We're gonna monitor the music tonight," it's very easy to-
Oh, yeah.
-comply. It's the, the times that's-
Oh, yeah, of course.
It's not being monitored. It's just like a speed check. I'm gonna tell you, we're gonna monitor the speed on this road today, and tell the people, we're gonna do a speed check today.
Oh, yeah. No, I get that.
Kind of like OSHA inspections. You just drop in.
That's right.
So, Mr. Chair, the other item of discussion we wanted to talk about was the topic of outdoor noise. And we've talked about it on two applications tonight. And these are the conditions we have drafted for these type of requests that may have outdoor noise. So I guess, upon the request of one of the members here, we just wanted to just have a brief discussion about it. Are we comfortable with the proposed conditions? Do you have any changes that you would like to see? Because we would like to just have a consistent, let, a consistent set of conditions for these properties. Now, the number of events might change from one to the next. The exact hours might change from one to the next if the area they're located in is different, you know? Something in a residential area might have fewer events allowed. Something out in the middle of nowhere might be a lot more events, you know, later hours. Who knows? But anyway, this is what we've been working under.
I, I appreciated having some actual conditions drawn up for this one. I thought it was nice to be able to follow something. I do have a question, though. So like, when the applicants come for the CUP, and they're gonna do something that might incur, you know, that might suggest that they're gonna have outdoor music, is that a question on the application? Like, is there something that indicates to them, hey, are you gonna do this? Are you not gonna do this? And what is your thought about it? At the time that they come and apply for that? So we don't have to bring it up during these meetings and you already know.
Uh, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Ostendorf, there is not. And that, we should add that. That's a great suggestion. With the luck in application tonight, it was a, a bit of an afterthought, you know? So the application didn't suggest it. It didn't ask about it. So then staff asked if that was the plan, and we wanted to make sure we covered it in the conditions. But this would be a good way to get that information right up front.
Yeah, because I think it'd be easier for them to just come up front and say, "I'm requesting this many events for this time," than for us to be able to act on that. And then, as Commissioner Percy stated, you could put that in the notice, and now everybody would know everything all at one time.
And, and that is, Mr. Chair, and see, that has been the biggest angst out there, is that we had closed the public hearing. These people had no idea the music was going to be there. And then we granted these conditions, and they had no due process to even voice their own opinion about that. One other idea is, David actually, Connor, that's still here today, he mentioned maybe switching it from a CUP to an IUP, so that you would maybe give them three years at the front end. And then after that, if everything's been fine, maybe you make it five or 10 years. But then it doesn't stay with the property, because under a CUP, it stays with the property.
But isn't that state statute you'd have to follow? Because could that be changed?
The use itself, it would, it could be an IUP. It's typically not an IUP because, or we haven't considered them IUPs at this point, because we're looking at a business. And typically, business operators don't want something that has that level of uncertainty to it for business practices. So typically, when you have a business, they're getting that conditional use permit, they know what they're getting, it runs with the property. And I understand the concern, but do we want music differently as a different level? That's kind of a different thing. So, you know, do we, is that the part that becomes something different? I, I don't know. But I think as a business owner, to say that Chady's would now be an IUP, after they've been an existing business for this long, would have been a big shift, to switch them to an IUP. You know what I mean?
Mr. Chair, I agree with, with what she's saying. However, when, when we go to rural tourism, and we, we have somebody coming in and saying they're gonna do a flower shop, or we have somebody come in and say, "We're gonna do an orchard, and we're gonna make cider." But yet, then it ends up being a concert venue, where it is weekly music every weekend. Is it any more the rural tourism that they're coming for this apple orchard? Or they're coming for the flower shop? Or are they coming for the music? Because you're charging tickets for the music venue, but it doesn't necessarily even relate to the business that you thought you were coming bringing, bringing in. So there's a difference, I believe, between a concert venue, somebody that has weekly music, opposed to somebody that maybe has music three times during the summer. There's a difference there.
I understand the difference, but I'm wondering, is that a ordinance change for the county board to consider, or something that this planning commission needs to talk, talk about?
I, I agree. Is, is it something similar to what we did? We didn't have any, anything on the books about vacation home rentals. And then all of a sudden, it became popular. And all of a sudden, we got these vacation home rentals. We had to respond to that. Solar gardens. We didn't have anything on the books about solar gardens. All of a sudden, we had to get something in, on the books about solar gardens.
And when you say on the books, you're saying an ordinance.
A solid ordinance that addresses that.
But it sounds like you need a solid ordinance that addresses it.
I think so. That's my opinion. Because there's a difference between, again, you know, one place that wants to have a couple events during the summer. And, and I don't want to handcuff them and say, "No, they can't do that." But, but the same thing is true about the impact of those neighbors. Those neighbors can live with one, two, three events, that's fine. But what about it being every weekend? And, and you think about those families that, in a rural area, they, they, they enjoy their peace and quiet, you know? They like the kids there. You know, they like to have neighbors come over. But should they be subject to hearing that music every weekend of the summer?
And I understand what you're saying. I understand, we've talked about this in at least one application every month for the past year or two. And so I'm wondering, how, what is the point that it has to be until the county board decides to take it up as an ordinance and not bring it back?
Yeah, I sort of lean towards having a set policy, where an applicant comes in and says, "We would like music, and here is, if you want music, here's the policy." Because if we do it on case by case, what happens is we come here, we negotiate with them.
Yeah.
Which is totally on, you know?
It's just not fair or equitable.
Yeah. You, if you're, you should, we should be reviewing the permit that's presented before us and not negotiating with them to change it.
Mr. Chair, I think- As, as we had previously talked about, and I think that's why it's gotten to this point, is that's exactly, when we talked about rural tourism, we said we were concerned about that situation. And now, we're at that point. So I think that's why we're saying, are these reasonable conditions for setting? Do, how do we want that policy, putting it in the application, making it clear? I think those are all, are all valid. But previous to this, when we didn't have very many, it was a whole, you know, you don't know until you know what you need to do. And we can't always anticipate every action. But that's why, I think, as I'm hearing you say, as a commission, you're saying, "Let's move forward with a more standardized policy for this, and that will help move this forward so that it's consistent." And they can put it in their request if we put it in an application for a business with that, potentially could have that kind of situation. So just make it a part of rural tourism application, to discuss that. And they should put it on there, or whatever their number is, whatever it is, the, that way it's noticed and everyone is aware of it.
Yeah.
Does that seem consistent? Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
I, I want to back up a little bit. I'm all in favor of an IUP versus a CUP. And we could, from this date forward, this is what, this is what you apply for. And it gives us, meaning the county, we can have a chance to review what is going on as far as the outdoor performances. I just don't want to say, "Music." It's, you have outdoor performances. And it also gives that business owner a timeframe for adjustment also. That's why I support going to IUP versus CUP, because we don't know what the future has to hold in regards to the places that all of a sudden, they evolve into an event center, or a performance center, whatever you want to call it. But I think we gotta have that flexibility. That's why I support an IUP.
Mr. Chair, and, and again, we, we kind of got caught off guard with this, just like we did, again, with vacation home rentals, and then we had to respond. And, and we're using the Minnesota noise ordinance. We're not using a music ordinance, we're using a noise ordinance. So at what point does noise become a nuisance? So you can, you can, it cannot violate the noise ordinance, but it can be very much a nuisance. Let me give you an example. My neighbor cuts the grass. He cuts it once a week. Now he cuts it twice a week. Now he's cutting it every day, okay? Now he's still within the noise ordinance, okay? But you know what? What happens if he, he cuts it from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night, every day? When does it become a nuisance? When does it become a nuisance? It's, it's within the noise ordinance, but when does it impact me and my, my health and my family's health and my well-being? We're using the noise ordinance. And again, we're allowing it to happen every day.
Do you monitor the level of the noise?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I see what you did there.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think, I think the concept of a nuisance is a very slippery slope.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I'm concerned about.
Yep, absolutely it is.
I mean, you can ask Tara about my office cubicle.
Yeah, I I just think when you're going to do it, it, there just needs to be some, some fair and equitable guidelines that you're putting together, and it can't be so like you said, negotiated when they come in here. I'd like to see how it goes if you put it into the application upfront and get more information from them, and see if that starts to turn around. I also would support. I would support an IUP, but I would be nervous because you could get one group of people that really raises a stink, and all of a sudden you're locked into some thresholds that could get a business knocked out because somebody just doesn't like them.
Yep.
But
But if we base the level of sound off of hard numbers that follow the state guidelines, then the business is fine.
Right, right.
If they fall within that.
But the reality of that is perception.
No, you have readings with hard numbers.
I'm telling you, I've got readings with hard numbers on situations, and I don't have a violation, and I have still people saying it's a violation when I don't have a violation. It's perception, and I do not say that that's a bad, that those people are, are wrong. I'm saying I know that it's not something that they're happy with, but when it does, when it meets the standard, I have nowhere else to go. So you, when it's an IUP and now it's a discretionary thing, it's going to become an issue. Or anything that becomes discretionary, we have to be really clear, it would have to be a violation of something, not just a perceived violation of something. And I guess that's where I get concerned. I, I'm not saying that, that people aren't validly upset with what's happening. I'm saying I have to have measurable things. And that's why, noise is not my favorite topic by any stretch, but I think it's important that we put some policies in place. That's why we're talking about the conditions. I like the idea of being clear in an application, so everyone's aware of it and going through that process. I think that's a good place to start. If the board or US Commission want to say, "Let's revisit rural tourism", we can certainly have a rural tourism discussion. This isn't that. This was just for music, but we certainly can have a rural tourism discussion.
I think it'd be good to open up the rural tourism discussion at some point.
Mr. Chair, you know, and sometimes with the, with the notices, like with a gravel pit, I think I've mentioned a couple of times that maybe we should extend it beyond a quarter mile, maybe actually make it a half mile because of the impact that there. If that, if that sound is of being able to be heard a quarter mile away, if, what if it's being heard a half mile away? And, you know, at what point does, you know, does that become an issue? When, you know, what is the, I think we maybe should also just get a handle on what does those decibels really sound like? Because I got, I, I've got people that call me at night and say, "I'm in my house and the bass is rattling the window." Okay? And to me, that's a problem. So I would like to experience that so that I know that, okay, I'm going to, I'm going to go out there and I'm going to actually see if that's true, because it should not be happening.
Mr. Chair, and I do not want to go down this crazy path, but I do want to express that it's really important to know that there's so many factors that affect wind, or affect noise, wind, humidity. There's lots of, of factors here. It might be fine at one time of the day, and then the sun goes down, things start to change and shift. And, and we know that, and it's not as simple as, let's just add more distance to a notification. I, I'm not disagreeing, I'm just saying I think there's a lot of factors. I can hear I-94 from my house that's well over three miles away certain times of the night. I, you know, I think, I think there's all kinds of variables, so I don't want to assume that if we change a number to make it a half mile, that all of a sudden everybody's in because it's going to vary, you know, wind direction and humidity, all those, those things are factors. So we do notify people based on the state statute that requires certain distances for certain things. We make sure we meet all that requirement. I don't want to create a new standard because we haven't done the research to develop a new standard. So I think we need to be mindful of the standard we have, and what does it mean for what we're trying to accomplish? But this is, I think what I heard was this was a good start for the policy for noise, and we look at rural tourism in the future.
Yeah.
Jennifer, is there more?
I don't have anything else on this topic.
Is there another topic to sneak up on us?
Not under other discussion unless you guys have something, sorry.
Nope, nope. Minutes from the March meeting.
Oh, just Mr. Chair, so then where are we going to go with, where are we going to go with this, then? Recommendation will be to continue to have discussion and pursue, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, the questions will be added to the application, and so we'll get better, better applications going forward and
And then these will become standard conditions.
These will be the standard conditions. We don't have to put it in an ordinance, but then everybody's clear about what the conditions would be ahead of it, so they know and understand about noise monitoring, they understand what they're going to have to have for their, for their monitoring and what the expectation is.
Yeah.
I guess I, I would like to, not necessarily rubber stamp those, I guess I'd like to maybe have it open for some discussion too.
This is, this is the base, we would start this as the base, and then as Jennifer said, it'd be discretionary. There may be some times where like, "I'm just going to use it because it's out there in the middle of nowhere" when they do Curd Fest, for example. Right? No one's there, they own lots of acreage. No one's, no one's upset about any of those things. So these, these situations will vary, so we need to be aware, so.
I, I agree. We're not going to let the squirrels come in and say they're complaining about the noise out there, so, yeah.
There's cheese, how could you complain as well?
Yeah, give the, yeah, give the squirrel some cheese.
I did have one quick thing, I forgot. The land use training coming up.
Monday.
Monday, already. And so Monday's in Staples, Wednesday is in Mankato. I have a couple flyers here. I know Jason's going.
Excited, very excited.
Angie's going, but there's, if anyone else wants to go, we can still get you registered.
I might try to escape on Wednesday. I'm supposed to do farm work in southwest Minnesota, but if you can write me a note, I'm sure my dad would excuse it.
Mandatory for your planning commission.
Jacob has to come to this training.
Thank you.
Do you know when Angie is going?
She's going Monday to Staples. I don't know exactly what time, but
Is she taking a county car up there?
We don't have county cars.
No, and she said, she didn't indicate to me that she had something else she was doing afterwards, so she was meeting someone. I was like, okay. I was checking in with her too, so.
Just carpool if needed, so, okay. All right, minutes. Motion to approve or deny or amend?
I move we approve the minutes as printed.
Jacob, second as a, second.
Second.
Everybody's seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Our next meeting is
Mr. Chair, before we adjourn, I just would like to add a G too.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we, as a commission, thank Lee Lenzmeyer for 34 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Stearns County. He recently resigned as a commissioner.
General consensus of the board for that?
I made it as a motion.
Okay, second.
I second.
All in favor?
Just wait, can we have a little discussion? I'd like to echo that, Rich. I, I think, you know, the number of years that Lee has put in definitely should be recognized. He's contributed in many, many ways, you know, and, and so as he said, it comes a time when, you know, you have to move on, and, and I would just want to say, I think we want to wish him well in the next chapter, so, yeah.
So we have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion, uh, next meeting is expectations for the agenda? Light.
Yeah, two items.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Let's get out of here.
Come on, son.
I'll second it.
General consensus for, could we adjourn?
It's tiredness.
She just doesn't seem to get as big as it should on that screen.